Good evening and welcome to the zoning board of appeals meeting of Wednesday, March 13, 2024. At this time, I'm going to call upon everyone to stand so we can pledge allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd ask you remain standing for a moment of silence in honor of our soldiers past and present. Thank you. At this time, I'd like to announce that the next regular scheduled meeting for the zoning board of appeals is Wednesday, March 27 at 6:00 PM here at this building. Moving on to the public hearings portion of tonight's meeting, the first case, which is a continued case, is variance case ZAV 2023-16. This case was continued from January 24 of 2024. The petitioner is South Coast Building LLC. The subject property is 63 Brand Avenue, also known as MAP 165 Lot 25. It was advertised. It's within a general business district. We've already waived the reading of the butters list on the record at the last hearing. As a general explanation.
We're getting passed.
The petitioner is seeking a variance to construct a 28-foot by 50-foot single-family residence. They're seeking relief on the Article VII, Section 375-30.3, the limited business and general business districts. Gentlemen, I don't know if you are familiar with or if you remember, the last time that this was brought before us, I think that Attorney Hume had astutely pointed out to us that he had a concern that there may have been merger of this lot, as it had been recently subdivided, if you will. So I believe we gave an opportunity to the petitioner's attorney to address this issue or do some research on the issue and come back to us with his position. So I'm going to call upon at this time, I'm going to call upon Attorney McVay. Can I come forward, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, members of the board. Michael McVay from Markey Walsh Law on behalf of South Coast. As you'll recall, and you just mentioned, last time we were here, Mr. Hume rightly pointed out the merger problem, which is we've been grappling with now since the last meeting. So if I may, if you'll indulge me a moment, I did some research. What I found, there is some case law that points to what I'll call a framework of inquiry that the SJC has looked at in cases of potential merger. And this goes back to a case in front of the SJC in 1972 called Lindsay versus the Board of Appeals versus Milton, Board of Appeals of Milton. In this case, this was sort of a reverse merger. The facts aren't exactly important, but in the conclusion, the court introduced this idea of an inquiry that looks at the separate identities of the parcels. So this case has been cited quite a bit. There is some case law subsequent that cites this case, including a 2002 land court case. And I'll go into as much detail as I'm allowed, but essentially, the facts are similar to the ones we have here. And in this land court case that took place on the Cape.
But before you do that, can you give us the history of this particular lot, actually, what transpired between the parcel that's in question, plus the adjoining parcel of which this may have been a part of, and what the, sort of the chronology of how that came by?
Absolutely.
How it came to be, I should say?
Well, so during some research here at Town Hall just yesterday, I realized that this parcel, which was formerly zoned, single-residence C in 1968, was switched, if that's relevant, was switched to general business district, 1968, during the town meeting. But this parcel lost its, this parcel was essentially merged with the adjacent parcel in 2002, when John Morango, who lives and continues to still live to the parcel, just to the west, purchased the property, the subject parcel, from the town in a tax deed. Both parcels are non-conforming.
So if I understand this correctly, the parcel to the west that has a structure, a dwelling on it?
Correct.
That, the owner of that parcel acquired this parcel in question, that's before us tonight, that was purchased from the town as a tax-taking?
Correct.
When was that?
That was July 19, 2002.
2002.
Yep.
Thank you.
So, non-conforming lots do merge for purposes of zoning. That is the common law doctrine of merger. And some cases, including this land court case, which I feel have a similar fact pattern to this one, have gone the other way. And in this particular case, called McGrath versus the Chatham Zoning Board of Appeals, essentially, an abutter in Chatham witnessed this turn of events. Two non-conforming lots came into common ownership around 1987. About seven years later, the mother and the owner of the non-conforming lots conveyed another of the non-conforming lots to her son. That lot was then subsequently sold to another party. At all relative times, the lots were very undersized. At first, they were undersized, under the 20,000 square foot requirement at the time. Then some years later, it became 40,000 square foot. At all times, these were roughly, it's not clear from the fact pattern, but about 15,000 square feet. Plaintiff witnesses the new owner of a non-conforming lot. That person applies for a building permit. It's granted. They challenge it at the zoning board of appeals. They affirm the issuance of a building permit. She takes it to, makes it to the land court. The land court applies this Lindsay case out of the SJC and, which looks at the separate identities of the parcels, and they apply a four-part test. Those parts, and I think it's illustrative because the facts are similar to here, where it's not an owner of two lots trying to build on a non-conforming lot. You see that a lot in the case files, but this was a, this was a case just like this one, where lots had merged under the common law of merger, and then it had been conveyed and then conveyed again. But essentially, what the court looked at was whether the physical division of the lots, were there any? I think in this case, you know, I've made some historical satellite imagery. You can see that Mr. Morango, you know, never did anything to this lot other than leave it as he found it. I think the furthest back I could find an image was 2009. You can see that he had cleared out and made it a small parking lot. But there's a, there's a small piece of wetland that runs between the two parcels, along with, I think, some fencing. The second element that the court applied was the location and structures on the lots. Again, Mr. Morango has his main residence on one lot. He has nothing. He left the other lot essentially vacant, used it as a parking lot occasionally. Third element was the means in which the lot is assessed. Now, I did print out the assessor's map, the assessor's parcel pages, but one lot is clearly, you know, denoted not developable. The other lot is his primary residence, and it's taxed as such. And then lastly, the description of the deed. Now, I printed the deed. If you'd like to see it, one lot, the tax deed from the town of Dartmouth to Mr. Morango simply says the land and if buildings. And then Mr. Morango's primary lot, which was conveyed to him in 1975, you know, clearly describes the buildings and land currently existing on the parcel. And then just furthermore, I think that there's value in how Mr. Morango could have used the lot, you know? At all times, he could, he parked his commercial vehicles on the lot. It's on, it has separate frontage. He could have built, he could have raised the lot and just created a single driveway from Walcott, where his home fronts, through both lots. Instead, he chose to go around on Brant Avenue and build a lot from that frontage. So to me, shows that he, there was a clear delineation between how he viewed these lots as opposed, he never made any attempt to, let me just be as clear as I can, he never made any attempt to combine these lots. They were never, they were never assessed as the same parcel. He never attempted to build any structure for his business or for his personal use. And I think that that's an important distinction.
Do you have a copy of that case?
I do. This has my notes, if that's okay.
Well, for now, I guess, but are you familiar with this case, Al?
No. And, you know.
Continue on. I just, I don't want to, I don't want to really take the time to read this right now.
Understood.
But.
And just speaking frankly, we understand this is a high hurdle. And it's not black and white, black letter law. I found some positive, that's not the only one, Mr. Chair, there's others. I think that one I chose because it had a fact pattern that I believed was the closest to ours here. You know, I think it's worth mentioning that, and this is, I'm paraphrasing, but it is within a city's power to override the effects of common law merger doctrine and for adjacent non-conforming lots to be treated as separate lots for zoning purposes. And that's paraphrased from a appellate court decision called Hoffman versus the zoning board of appeals, which, if I may, brings me to my only other point. And that is this. We know we don't enjoy the protection of MGL, of the grandfather provision of Section 6 of 48. Towns are allowed to provide for a more liberal, how do I put this, a more generous application to defeat the grandfather merger? I'm sorry, to defeat the merger doctrine. I believe that Dartmouth has such a provision that is not exactly clear for this project, and that is your, it's called the vested rights, and you may see this in other applications, but it's the vested rights doctrine and then under the non-conforming article. That, it's, that's 375-63B, which I had to look at for another case, and that is for non-conforming lots. And I bring it up, it, a clear reading of that provision allows for a non-conforming lot to, I believe, be exempt from the merger doctrine if it's in a residential district. So I believe the way it was written excludes us. I bring it up only because it's, this particular lot used to be zoned, single-residence C. So I think there's a totality of the circumstances argument that could be made, that this lot could enjoy that protection. You know, I understand that this merger is, this question is probably the gateway question, so I would.
Well, this is the first time that, I'll be honest, that I've heard an argument come before us, at least since I've been on this board, trying to find a legal argument against merger. I have not had one put forth in this manner. I'll be honest with you, I want to read this case thoroughly before I really move forward on this. There's another issue as to whether or not, I think this, and this is just sort of what's been brought to my attention, is possibly an ambiguity in what zoning by law actually applies under the circumstance, whether we are under the development standards of 375-18, which the minimum lot size is 150-foot of frontage and 43,560 square feet, wherein your client would be seeking, and I guess an argument would be made, is seeking a greater amount of relief than if they were under 375-30, where they're within the general business district, and it's a 15,000-square-foot requirement. And it doesn't reference anything about frontage, but I think if you're 15,000 general residents, that's usually the general residence requirement, that's 100-foot of frontage would be the minimal. And this lot, my understanding is that has 125 feet of frontage.
Sounds right.
But it only has 12,632 square feet. So either way, you need relief. It's just, if I find, if we're going under one provision, you're seeking less relief than if you're going under another provision. And I'm not saying you're going under any of these. You may be just saying, hey, there's only one that applies, and you're only seeking relief under that. But I think we might have a little bit of an ambiguity that at some point, we're probably going to have to rectify from a drafting standpoint of the bylaws within the town.
I would agree with whatever you say, Mr. Chair. I would add that based on the denial letter from, at the time, the building commissioner, we're here to ask for relief from 15,000 square feet from the.
Was the building commissioner of the town, who we had at the time, felt that the applicable provision was the 375-30 provision?
Correct.
Let me just verify that. Thank you.
That was Ed Bailey?
Yeah, that's what they, that's what they referred to.
That was Joe Braga?
Yes, and that's what I read into the record last time. Okay. All right. So we're going to give people in the audience an opportunity to speak, either in favor or against. Do you have anything that you'd like to ask the counsel at this time? I'm sure you understand the issues here.
Absolutely. But I, I think I'm more inclined to applying if, I need to look at the zoning bylaws too, to see if a single residence is allowed in a general business by special permit or, I'm talking about the use.
I believe, I believe it's an allowed use, I believe. I don't think it says by special permit.
No, I think he's right. I think it's an allowed use.
Well.
Okay. I'm not sure, but.
Look at the provision, right? Obviously, this is just an abstract of what that is. I know that you'd probably like to read it in its entire context.
No, I like to, yeah, I need to go back to the general business zoning, allowed uses, just to make sure. And if a house or a residence, residential dwelling is allowed, what would be the minimum requirement on the lot? Because I think if we're looking at the zoning bylaws, if you're looking at the relief, I think the relief should be from the 43550. If he's in the current, the current zone, he's, the current zone.
Is general business district.
Is the general business. So.
You say that, but unfortunately, Halim, it says here that, that within limited business and general business districts, a single-family home, if you're going to build within that district, it has to have a minimum of 15,000 square feet. I think that that's what that's saying.
Right. I, I don't have the, I.
No, no, you don't have the whole, we just have an abstract of it. I get it.
Right.
I'm not saying, I'm not saying that this is right.
No, no, I'm not. I'm not sure. I've never seen a case similar. I don't remember. And the other thing is also, I, you mentioned the four parts of the criteria from the court on the, and you said one was the structure on the lot, another one was the access or, right?
You have the, it's a four-part test. One is the contents of the deed, the.
Right, but did you meet any of those?
Well, that's up for interpretation. I think that some are, yeah, I believe we do meet those.
Some?
Well, I'd have to have them read back to me. I'd hate to.
Well, I got it right here. So I'll just read it, and you have it highlighted here, which I think is one of the most critical parts of this. It says, "The crucial inquiry in determining merger is whether the lot retains a separate identity." Now, what separate identity actually means, I don't know, but I'm sure they're going to further explain it. And it refers to the case that he's relying on heavily, almost solely.
Solely.
And it says, "Fact is examined in determining separate identity include, one, the physical division of the lots by fence, by a fence or wall. We don't specifically have, we might have a fence there now. I think there's a post-in-real fence there, but how long has it been there? I don't know. And whether or not it needed to occur at the early on in some phase of ownership, I guess that's left to interpretation by us. Two, the location of structures on the lot, and then in parentheses, lots."
There was no, there were no structures on.
Was there ever a structure on this lot that's in question?
No, not that I'm aware of.
Oh, can I have your pen, or that pen? No, I, what, I think the argument that counsel's trying to make for the petitioner is that, look, there was separate identity here because there's a house with some auxiliary building or shed on it, and that was kept specifically on the other lot. It wasn't placed on this lot to keep this lot separate. I guess that's an argument that could be made. Another argument would have been if there was a separate parcel, a separate dwelling on that lot, the one that's in question here today, if there was a separate dwelling that had been knocked down at some point in time, there was always the intent to keep that as a separate and identity, keep it with a separate identity.
The other argument is that the owner of both lots used both lots.
Well, number three says, "The means in which the lot is assessed," so I guess he's made a pretty good argument, that it's been assessed separately, even though it's been assessed as a non-buildable lot, it's been assessed separately. And four, "The description of the lots in the deed." I don't, I don't think, I don't know how they were. I don't, I haven't done a title exam. He hasn't presented me anything that shows.
I have the two titles, if you're.
A separate division. However, we've had this issue. We've had the, the undersized lot issue has come before us for almost a decade now. And I've been on this board, what, maybe seven or eight years now?
Ten.
Ten, oh, ten years, okay. So when I use the word decade, it applies entirely to me. Where, as, I'm not going to say as a general principle, because we look at these always on a case-by-case basis, and my brothers here, they have their own opinion on this. And I don't want to be the only one to take up the air in the room. They're going to have an opportunity to speak as well. We have generally not granted undersized lots with undersized square footage or insufficient frontage. I know that with square, insufficient square footage, undersized in that sense, I haven't seen one granted. Not to say that we won't grant one at some, at some time in the future. Because again, we look at these, and I think what we have difficulty with, and at least I had difficulty with in looking at these, is that my predecessors, who have sat here before me, and people that are no longer on this board, have taken that position, and we've tried to keep consistency, right? And you, as counsel, you understand the importance of judicial consistency, and we try to keep the same thing, where people will know when they come before us that we're giving everyone a fair shake. So there have been numerous people that have come before us with undersized lots, not so much lately, not so much lately as Attorney Hume has brought to your attention, that if you watch TV and you watch us, you'll know that we have not granted undersized lots. And we have felt that that has not met the criteria, just as a general sense, that that does not meet the criteria. It's not that it's a personal thing that we've adopted, it's just that we have taken the interpretation that it doesn't meet the criteria of 48, Section 10. That a fair assessment, Mr. Hume?
Absolutely a fair assessment, and I think I've said it numerous times.
I know. So, and I think you made it known to Attorney McVay at the early onset of the last time of the hearing that we were here, the last time it was scheduled before us. So, irregardless of what we apply with regard to which of these statutes, whether you have to meet 15,000 square feet or 43,000 square feet, 43560, which is the acre, you're still under. And I, and I don't know whether or not the fact that you can, even if you were to get beyond the merger part of it, so let's assume that we adopt this case and we follow, we're here to follow the law, right? We don't make up our own rules. And we find that they meet the criteria of not being a merged lot, we still have to apply the set of facts that we have with an undersized lot on 48, which historically, we have not determined that that meets the statutory requirement. Fair assessment, Mr. Hume, again?
Yes, it's a fair assessment. Quick question, counsel. This case that you just cited to us, Superior Court judge decision?
I believe that's a land court case.
It's a land court? Why doesn't it say that? Oh, yeah, it does. I take that back. Okay.
So it's not an appeals court decision?
No, it's a land court decision. And I, do you know whether this went above the land court, whether it ever got appealed above the land court judge?
I do not.
Okay.
Right. So, Mr. Hume, is there anything you'd like, I mean, excuse me, Mr. Schubert, was there anything you'd like to add at this point in time?
Because we're going to still hear from people. Right. Well, I mean, the, generally, I think it's whether we're looking at 43560 or the 15,000, I think you can't, you know, there was a reason why zoning changed, basically, you know? I mean, probably the 15,000 was good in the 60s or the 70s or the 50s, you know, and then, but now, you look at the zoning bylaws in Dartmouth, there's minimum, either you have R40 or R80, you know, to, and I understand the area around it, it's all undersized lots and all that. It just, my concern is, we need to look at the case law here, and also, we don't want to set a precedent, because I'm sure there's other cases in this town that's going to come before us that are very similar to this. Because there were cases that were very similar to this, and we denied them. So we have to be very careful, and again, like Attorney Medera said, you know, there's nothing personal, we're just trying to be fair to everyone, look at the zoning bylaws and try to apply it to the best of our ability, right?
Yes.
And we're also concerned about the precedent that it sets. So there have been people that have been denied variances, and they've made other decisions, and some, I'm sure some of them impacted them financially. And to make a change now, I think it's something that we have to give a significant amount of thought, because it's not only going to be Attorney McVay that's coming before us, it's going to be other people that are going to, there are many other undersized lots in the town of Dartmouth, where if we grant a variance on one, then we have to basically treat everyone similarly. I have a case that's popping in my mind where it's sort of reversed on this, where we found merger, where a lot shared a boundary of about 13 feet of an entire bound of over 100 feet, they only shared a common bound of 13 feet. And there was an attorney that came before us and tried to make an argument that that was an insignificant lineal footage to trigger merger. And it was, it was a lot on Wardell Street, I believe it was, near McCabe. You guys remember that lot?
Vaguely.
And we found that there was merger, and as a result, we didn't, we didn't grant a variance for that, for that lot. So here, you're making a different type of argument, and even if we were, and I'm just concerned, I still want to make sure I exhaust my opinion of the case, and as far, my interpretation of the case, if you will. So that, assuming that we were to find that there was no merger, given that those criteria were met, we're still, we're still faced with a challenge of, and this is a three-member board, you have to get all three votes. So even if you were to persuade me that there should, that one, there's no merger, and two, that I should vote for an undersized lot and it meets the requirements of 48, you still got to persuade these other two individuals to do the same thing.
Can I ask a question, Mr. Chair? What is the appetite of this board for undersized lots for business uses?
I don't, I don't think we've had, we've granted, I don't think one's come before us for a business.
Lot of firsts.
I, isn't, what is business? Is it 10,000 square feet for a business?
No. General business.
Whatever those requirements are within, but I'm talking about some pre-existing lots.
Pre-existing is pre-existing.
Yeah, if they're pre-existing.
You can redevelop a pre-existing if you don't, you still have to come to this board if you're, if you don't meet, if you're expanding an existing building on a pre-existing lot. Let's say you're expanding the building, you already don't have the lot area or the setback. You can come for a special permit, either under special permit expansion of existing non-conforming or a variance to, but no one ever came here to create a lot. If the lot was created before, I believe, whatever the lot size, you can do, you can build as long as you meet the standard, the design standards. If you can't, you have, whether it's a setback issue, you'll have to come to this board.
Would I?
But I guess to answer your question, well, obviously, you know what the requirements are, right? In a general business, it's 40, it's an acre, and it's 150-foot of frontage, in order to be able to create a lot within the general business district. Now, there are some minimum lot sizes, if they were pre-existing, that I know that you could, if you have a pre-existing lot, there's a state statute that says that as long as that is 50 feet of frontage and 5,000 square feet, it's a buildable house lot, if it was pre-existing with no merger. Believe it or not, there's a statute that we have.
I think, I just, I just thought of something, and I'm, again. I think, I just, I just thought of something, and I'm, again, I think in the general business district, they allow you a business apartment with the business. Now, you might want to talk to, you know, we might, you might want to look at this, but I don't think it has, it could be separated. It could be, I'm not sure, I think that zoning bylaws doesn't say, but they do allow business apartments.
I don't remember that.
That isn't allowed use in this, in this district.
In the general business.
Correct.
Because you're looking at that lot, that, the two lots together are in a general business, and that's a general business lot. It doesn't say you can't have multiple buildings on it, but the use, let's say, you want to put a separate building on a lot in a general business, I believe you can put something that it's allowed use in the general business, as long as you meet the criteria for, let's say, parking, setbacks, and you, front, and, no, no frontage.
So if I may, Helen, and the thing is, and I, I think it's astute of him to try to get a sense of where, where we would feel about this. Let's start with this question first. Do you recall anyone coming before us for an undersized general business lot for business purposes?
I can't recall.
I don't remember. How about you, Alvin?
You remember?
No, I, I have not been on the board that long.
Oh yeah, no, I mean, the, the case, it was an addition, you can always add to an existing non-conforming lot, or modify, or even redevelop.
But there's no structure on this lot, and it's a separate lot.
Correct. But what I'm saying, they have to keep the lot merged. He, he might be able to come in as, to build another separate structure on, on that lot, but the use.
But it can't be merged if it's not held in common ownership, it's held by, that house is held by somebody else, a third party.
Yeah, it has to go back, so, you can't.
Here's the other thing that bothers me about this. When Mr. Marango bought the lot, a tax title, he now made his non-conforming lot conforming.
Or less non-conforming.
Well, I think it was, I think, I think his lot is 12,5, but I'm not 100% sure of that. So now he got.
It is.
25,000 square feet. So now his lot conforms.
Well, he got closer to the 43,50.
It did conform, and then he created.
Now you chop off this lot, and now we have two non-conforming lots. But I, I don't know how, even if someone were to walk into my law office and ask me something about, you know, can I sell this lot, I don't know that I would have done anything to, seeing that lot had been out before, it had been in separate ownership, I might have checked it, I don't know.
I think what happens is people come with a deed, it's a, it's a separate deed, and they say, I want to convey this.
This is a tax title deed to this piece of property.
Mm-hmm. But I think what the, what the counsel was trying to get a sense, and obviously, we can't informally provide an opinion, but how would the board, how do you think the board would feel where someone would have come, well, I guess, that's a general question, more of a general question, it's not, you still have the hurdle of the fact that it was, it was a non-conforming lot, it became conforming, and then they created this new non-conformity. And what kind of precedent is that going to be setting if we were to approve anything to be built on this lot? Even if it were in the context of, and I think what the thing, I think what they're thinking, possibly, or counsel's thinking, is, all right, maybe we don't build a home, we just build a garage, and at least there's some usability of the property. And I always try to find utility for property, other than just growing potatoes on it, right? And, and I think as, as a zoning board, we always have to be mindful of, you know, the petitioners, not necessarily plight, but the challenges that they face in trying to use property. Is that kind of?
That accurately depicts what I'm trying to get across, yeah.
All right. All right, so I'm going to open up the hearing to anyone in the public, because I'm sure there are people that would like to add some comments. All right, so at this time, I'm going to call upon anyone in the audience who would like to speak in opposition to this petition. If you have to identify yourself with the name and address first.
Sure. Michael Banville, 65 Brandt Avenue.
So where do you?
I was right next door.
Right next door?
Right next door.
To the north of this?
To the north, correct. I won't keep you long, it's very simple. I'm listening to all this talk about conforming and everything that's going on, but the bottom line is, like both of you gentlemen have said numerous times, especially in January, when we were here, that it's an undersized lot. Bottom line. It's undersized for this. And bottom line is, I don't want anything built there, and if it's not, if it's not feasible, then it's undersized. So, I don't need to say much more, except that's what it is.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak in opposition to this Just kindly identify yourself, name and address.
I'm John Isher, where I live is 66 Brandt Avenue. First off, I'd like to correct something. I did get paperwork from Michelle, but the numerical sense, I was thrown off by it was first zero, and now it's 63, so I did get some paperwork for you, I apologize for that. And.
And where's 63 in relation to this property?
Right across the street from me.
So to the east?
West, towards Fall River.
Towards Fall River. All right, so I think the property actually, the frontage on this property is on the east, is it not?
Yes, I believe it, I believe it is across from the driveway.
And you're across the street.
My driveway, yes.
Right. Okay, so the property's to the west of you?
Yes.
Okay, fair enough.
Yeah.
I was trying to get a sense.
It's really up to say, yeah, yes.
How this impacts you, that's all.
I appreciate it. That's really all I have to say at this meeting, I'm happy with the way it went, and I'll see you at the next meeting. I want to say thank you, board, thank you, chairman, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak in, in opposition to this petition? Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak in support of this petition? All right, gentlemen, I'm all ears to any suggestions that you gentlemen may have at this point in time.
From my point of view, I think I would, to give counsel a fair shake, I think I would like an opportunity to look at the case law that he has cited, just so I get a feel for where the merger issue actually stands as it is today, so.
Not only for this case, but for future cases.
Future cases as well.
No, I agree with you there, I agree with you wholeheartedly. The only thing is, I also don't want to give anyone any false hope in any direction, but even though, let's assume that it's, this is persuasive to yourself and the rest of the members of the board, that there is no merger, we still have the elephant in the room, which is the fact that we have an undersized lot, and it wasn't one that was created a long time ago, it was one that was created not that long ago. And then we're going to consider doing, and, you know, allowing them to, to construct on that, and, you know, not only whether or not we feel it, it meets 48, Section 10, but the future impact of that as well. And obviously, individually, we all have to work that out in our minds when we look at this stuff. So I think I'd be willing to continue this to, when's our next meeting date, March 27?
We're full.
We're full, all right.
Mr. Chair, if I could, if I could. If I understand the, the board, if I understand the, the board, I would ask respectfully to just withdraw the application.
Okay. I think it's, quite frankly, it may be a wise decision.
Yeah, just before we do that, just for the record, I did mention something about potentially other uses on the lot, but only if the, the lots were still as one in common ownership, not the two separate. I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, no, I, I was a little lost at first.
I think really it was more damaged by, by subdividing the two properties than keeping it as one, because there was other potential there.
The other thing, but let me just say this, I wouldn't mind seeing an undersized lot request coming before us on a general business, in the general business context. I'm not saying I speak to everyone, but I would always give that due consideration as well. I don't want to be, you know, in dicta that we're just saying no to any undersized lots. That's not how, where I'm approaching this, at all.
It's a little disheartening to hear, in 10 years, you haven't heard of an undersized lot. And I understand it's completely in the board's discretion, and it's extremely high hurdle, we, we understand that. I think in this case, we just need to reassess and not continue this.
All right. Okay. I can respect that, and I appreciate it. So I entertain a motion that we allow the petitioner to withdraw.
I make a motion that we allow the petitioner to withdraw his application for a variance.
Can we do so without prejudice?
On ZAV, the noise in the background, on ZAV-23-16, without prejudice.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, the ayes have it.
Thank you.
Thank you, counsel.
Keep your case.
Yes. Yes, I was going to ask if you could keep it, yes. Will you give me a copy of that?
I will.
Then why don't you give it to me, and then I'll scan it.
Make copies?
You can scan it.
You made a great argument on the issue of merger.
Thank you, I'd like to take.
It'll be interesting to see what this case has to, to provide us and shed some light. Thank you. All right, moving on. The next matter that we have is variance case ZAV 24-2.
He's on it.
It's him, he's on his case as well.
Oh!
He didn't get enough of them on the first, he'll have enough of them on the second.
Did you do the research on this one yet?
No, I haven't.
The petitioner, applicant James Lemieux, the representative is Michael McFay, the subject property is 96 Bryant Street, it's map 178, Lot 135, it's located within the single-residence A district. It was legally advertised on February 22, 2024, and February 29, 2024.
I make a motion that we waive the reading of the, but is this?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it. In this case, the petitioner is seeking a variance for lot area and frontage relief in order to construct a single-family residence. Counsel, I do understand that you've got a letter here to seek a continuance, but I'm going to read everything into the record today, since we have ample time, and this way, I'll read everything in the record, I'll even give anyone who's here in the audience an opportunity to speak if they like, and then I'll, I'll read your, I'll read your motion, if that's okay. All right, so I've read that, let's get to the letter of the building inspector. We have no comments from any of the other boards.
No comments.
No comments. Oh no, excuse me, see comments, it says, but I don't think there was anything, I didn't see anything.
No, because I, there were a couple, but I haven't, they haven't finished getting them to me.
Oh, so there are comments?
There will be.
Oh, okay.
But I didn't see it in the packet.
Right.
So this is a letter, and it says, I've reviewed your applications regarding 96 Bryant Street, it was dated January 9th. I've reviewed your application, at this time, your proposal cannot be approved due to non-compliance with current zoning regulations. Applicant is proposing to build a single-family residence on a lot that does not conform to the lot area or frontage requirements of the Town of Dartmouth zoning bylaw. A variance must be applied for and secured from the zoning board of appeals in order to proceed with your request. Your application is being denied under the following sections of the Dartmouth zoning bylaw, 375-7.4. Lot area A1, the minimum lot area for all uses in single-residence A district shall be 40,000 square feet. A contiguous area of the lot, at least 32,000 square feet, shall not include freshwater or coastal swamps, bogs, marshes, and wet meadows, land below mean higher water on land subject to title action. The rest of it is not necessarily pertinent. And the subpart two is, which is C1, the minimum frontage for all uses in single-residence A district shall be 150 feet. Such frontage shall be on a public way, a way the town clerk certifies is maintained and used as a public way. And the, it indicates that the property is within the single-residence B district, excuse me, single-residence A district, and it is from the Town of Dartmouth Building Department. Now, we don't have any other comments at this point in time from any other town boards. I do have an explanation here. I have a narrative from the petitioner, but I'll wait till the next hearing date, and I'll let you elaborate on the narrative. But I do have a letter in opposition, and I want the petitioner to be aware, that it is from a LaShawn DePina, and it's addressed to the board, and it says, I want to start this off by thanking you for allowing me to submit this email regarding 96 Bryant Street, as I am unable to attend this hearing in person. I want to officially state that I am opposed to the petition proposed by James Lemieux, who was seeking a variance for the lot area for the construction of a single-family residence. I purchased this home because it is in an established, quiet, and clean neighborhood. I work from home, and the noise that will be caused by new construction will not be conducive to this, as I am providing telehealth services. This proposed new construction would be abutting my property, obstruct the current view, and decrease privacy. Additionally, Mr. Lemieux does not manage the shared property line, as evidenced by the overgrowth of trees slash shrubbery that cross the property line. Please reach out and let me know, should you need additional information or require another statement. I look forward to hearing back from you regarding next steps and the outcome of the hearing. Well, it's usually not our role to get back to people on this, they have the public hearing forum, but we can let her know when the next date is, okay? And obviously, we're announcing it to the public, to the viewers at home.
Mr. Chair, what was, what was that woman's name?
It was a LaShawn DePina, and it doesn't indicate what her property address is, but it appears that she's an abutter to the property. And she, she is, she indicates that there's a shared property line in which it's not been properly designated. She says that there's an overgrowth of trees and shrubbery that cross the property line. All right, so I'll get to your letter.
Can we get a copy to counsel?
Yes, we can get a copy, if you'd like a copy of it. So at this point in time, I'm going to open up the hearing to the public, is there anyone here that's present that would like to speak, in either opposition or in support of this petition? All right, so I got two hands up, so we'll start with ladies first. If you can come up and identify yourself, name and address, and sort of give us a bearing as to where you reside in relation to this property.
Suzanne McGuire, 837 Trade Wind Street.
Okay.
And I just wanted to say that LaShawn DePina is not an abutter to that property. She lives across the street, she's my neighbor.
Right, within 300 feet, right?
Yeah, but she indicated in the letter.
Oh, she's an.
Across the street from it, on another street.
They call them abutters.
No, I'm saying. Additionally, Mr. Lemieux does not manage the shared property line, as evidenced by the overgrowth of trees, shrubbery that cross the property line. Now, this could be a shared property line, I just assumed, I guess I, I made a presumption here, that it was a property line shared by her, and it may not be. Okay.
Oh, all right, so I just wanted to clear that up, she's.
I thank you for that.
Across the street and on another.
So she's not an immediate, she's in a butter with the abutters list.
She's on Trade Wind Street. She's my neighbor on.
She's within the 300.
She's within the 300 feet, but she doesn't have a shared property line.
Shared property line.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for that clarification. All right, is, I believe there's someone else that would like to come forward?
Hello, my name is Brian Susai, I live at 90 Bryant Street, it's actually the Bryant House. That all used to be part of the Bryant Farm a long time ago, but my family moved in in April, and since then, I, I share some of the same sentiment, it was a quiet place, we have three children, although it seems a little less quiet than we had anticipated now after having lived there for a while, there are quite a few college students that walk the streets there with no sidewalks, which is a little treacherous at night, but also, we have a problem of people cutting through the lot, starting at this lot in question, and then cutting through the backyards of my neighbor, who lives right next to this lot, and then my lot, trying to get towards Wilbur Avenue. So that's a little concerning with me, that's happened actually just yesterday, some random woman was walking through our yard, and that concerns us, because we have three children, small children. And I, I feel like I don't have to say much, it sounds like you are men of the law, and that if the law says that a lot size should be such, that there, it should be such to build on, and it doesn't meet that standard, then there's, there's nothing to talk about. And so, other than saying my personal opinions, it sounds like I really have nothing to worry about, so, yeah.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak either in favor or against? There do not appear to be anyone. Now, counsel, I understand that you're seeking a continuance, is that correct? Now, counsel, I understand that you're seeking a continuance, is that correct? What date are you seeking a continuance to?
How far out can you go?
April 10th.
Can you go further than April 10th, please?
I'm sorry, 24th.
I'll give him May, if he, if he wants May. But you're going to have to sign, there's a.
Yep, that's okay.
I believe it's May 8th.
May 8th?
Yeah.
All right, and if you need something else beyond that, I'm sure that this board would be inclined to do so.
Sure.
And if that's incorrect, we will.
Yes, and if that date doesn't work out, obviously, and all of this hinges on your understanding that you would have to sign a necessary paperwork so that this doesn't. All right, great. All right, so, gentlemen, I'll, I'll entertain a motion that we continue the matter.
I make a motion that we continue variance request ZAV-24-2 for 96 Bryant Street.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And we're continuing to March 8th? I mean, May 8th, excuse me, May 8th, yes. I can't go backwards. And for whatever reason, if we need to change that date, we, we'll make it work, right?
Absolutely.
Yes, thank you, board.
Thank you. All right, gentlemen, that being the last matter that we have on tonight's meeting on the agenda, is there anything else that we think we need to discuss? If you want to discuss thoughts on the record or anything like that? Okay. So Helim won't be here April 10th. All right, I'll entertain them.
What's the one after?
24th.
Okay.
I'll, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
You get that.
I make a motion to adjourn.
I second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it. Have a nice evening, everyone.